Go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, in their own right.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
Nobody online, right?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Are there any visitors online? Okay. No visitors here, present in person. Moving on to agenda item number three, the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Item number four, public hearings. There are no public hearings tonight. Old business. There is no old business. New business. Um. Uh, business item. New patrol vehicles.
Okay. My name is Damian Flowers. I'm the chief of police of the Onslow Police Department. Um, I came to discuss a little bit about new patrol vehicles. Um. We originally ordered Fords last year and we put out a staff report. You guys approved that and we went ahead with the order. Um, Ford has been having a problem with back orders and our due date kept getting pushed back. Due to that, they recently canceled the order and they're supposed to be rolled over into the 2024 model. Starting in January. The problem with that is they're only going to do a build for three months and there's no guarantee that our build will get in due to the back order for all the other agencies that have orders in. So it's not a guarantee and they're only going to build for three months. That made me look into other models, Dodge and GM. Um, I understand there was a possible concern with Dodge, so we looked at GM also. Um, GM only has one PPV, which is a pursuit, uh, police pursuit vehicle. They only have one and that's the Tahoe. And they're not even accepting orders until next May, um, for Tahos. So unless we want to wait until May or unless we want to wait for the Fords, whenever that may be, we could go with Dodge and their bill date starts this November and it's looking like about ninety to a hundred and twenty days out to receive once you order the, order the vehicle. Um, due to that, we were looking at the Dodge, so I got a pay scale on what, you know, it's going to cost for the Dodges versus what we already ordered. We're getting a newer vehicle model, so I rated all that in and that's where you got the new staff report with the new fees. I think it was like a little over a couple thousand, um, more per vehicle. Um. But I wanted to put it out there that there's pros and cons, um, to the different vehicles. A lot of agencies in my research are actually moving to the Durangos. Um, I talked with Marion County Kaiser, St. Helens PD, Cusby PD and Wireworks, who does a lot of the building. And, uh, more and more of them are going towards the Durangos and out of all of them, I haven't got any significant maintenance repairs other than one Hemi version of the Dodge, which was a significant repair, but it was a floor model that they were forced to get due to necessity of a vehicle. Um, other than that, that was the only repair model or repair problem with the Dodges. I'm not saying they don't have any. I think each vehicle comes with its pros and cons. Um, but due to the crisis kind of that we're in, we're looking to get new vehicles and we're trying to figure out where we're going to get these new vehicles from. Temporarily, I've contacted Kaiser, well, I've contacted a few agencies and Kaiser PD was looking to get rid of some vehicles. They knew about our problem and we ended up getting two Tahos. I think they're 2015s donated to the police department. Um, they're already fully outfitted, but they just need a radio and a radar. Um, so we've got something to kind of spread out the use amongst our vehicles until we figure something out. So we do have a wait time if we need to wait. It doesn't matter to me or my entire police department on what kind of vehicle we get. We're just looking at possibly getting a new vehicle. That's why I proposed with the staff report on the Durangos.
Anyone have any questions?
Is that what I want?
Honestly. We're fine with waiting if we would like to wait there. Like I said, there's an additional cost to the Durangos and that's why I drafted up that staff report. Um, it's just to show you guys, we might have to spend a little bit more money because we're getting a newer model year. Prices have gone up. Um, and that's why we're looking at the increase. So I'm fine with the Durangos. I'm fine with waiting a little bit since we got the donor cars for the Fords. Um, I think my preference is to try to get a couple of new vehicles to release some of the wear and tear on the vehicles we got. Even the two Tahos that we got, they're 2015s, they're old, they've, they've got problems. Um, but they were free and we can spread out some use, so.
Well, let me just point out real quick, uh, they're not actually free. There's a few thousand dollars we'll have to stick into to get them going. And if they, any, either one of them have any, uh, significant repair in the near future, which is why they typically get rid of these vehicles is because repair costs are still enough. If we will just surplus it out, we will do that repair. So that's, that's how we're going to kind of bridge the gap until new cars come in. Um, and then also just for council's, uh, information, uh, do you know if we go back to Ford and get back in line, will the price be the same?
That wasn't confirmed. It was thought that the price that we got quoted might roll over to the 2024, but I couldn't get that confirmed. Also with the two Tahos that we got, like you were saying, there's a little bit of cost in that. We did get them for free, but, uh, two front tires on both vehicles will need to replace. Uh, we also need to strip off the Kaiser graphics and like buff them out a little bit, clean them up. It's going to about roughly eight or nine hundred dollars per vehicle to do all that, um, to clean them all up and then whatever the tires cost. So there's a little bit of cost to that, but we did get them for free that I was getting at, so. Like I said, the preferences, uh, possibly Durangos just to get new vehicles, um, a little bit sooner since we ordered them last year. But I'm fine with whatever the council, um, decides they want to do.
So basically the Durango start in November, but we don't have a date.
We don't, so November is when they start their bills and taking orders. Um, and then as soon as we get an actual VIN number back, it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days out from that.
Yeah.
So there's, there's no really set date, but if you just figure, if we order as soon as possible in November, we're looking at ninety to a hundred and twenty days out from getting the vehicle.
And no guarantees at all with Ford and with GM.
GM.
We're looking even later, so.
May, and then there's no guarantee on the Fords, but they're looking at starting the builds in January, but they're only building that model for three months. And then they're jumping to the 2025 and I don't know when they're going to start that.
Yeah. So it doesn't sound like there's much hope in getting a new vehicle if we don't go with the Durangos.
That's kind of where I'm getting at, but like I said, we do have a couple of vehicles to help spread the use if we decide to wait.
Um, you answered, um, counselor Lee had emailed some questions and wondering if we could go with GM. He had some questions about the, the costs of getting them ready to be patrol ready and concerns with transmission. Um, I don't know if you guys saw that. Scott.
Yeah.
He emailed, he emailed.
In his personal, oh, go ahead.
I read the email and I talked with, uh, Marion County Fleet Manager. I talked with the Marion County Fleet Manager today and asked him what is, because I, I, where I work at Marion County, I see about fifteen or twenty Durango sitting there, ready to go. That's what Marion County ordered. And so I talked to the fleet manager and he told me that with this eight-speed automatic transmission, when they first started, they had problems with them. They had slippage issues. They had, uh, issues with them, uh, acclimating to one person and then the next person driving them. And they thought they were slipping and it was just a big learning curve and that they took care of a lot of it. I, I would love to hear Scott, what he's talking about.
It looks like Scott just got on.
Perfect.
Yeah, Mayor, I have Scott.
Perfect. I, I'm, I want to hear what he has to say.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Scott, we can hear you.
All right. So, uh, by a mechanic by trade, I've, uh, experienced a lot of, so I do a lot of side work. I don't work on civilian equipment much, but because I'm a military mechanic. However, with a lot of customer base that I have had in the past, it's, and, and going off of what my brother has also told me, because he's a huge Dodge fanatic, but he, he's into more of the come inside of it. And he has told me as well that there's a lot of transmission issues with the Dodges. So I don't know if Dodge has corrected the transmission issues of the past. But I would hate to see, you know, Onslow police vehicles down due to transmission issues. Granted, if we get new ones, we're not going to have, we're not going to see a lot of issues at first. But later on down the road, um, with the amount of work that they're going to have to do to make them police worthy, I just, I see a lot of transmission issues and I would like to, uh, I would like, uh, to consider maybe if we don't want to go with a Ford product, maybe look into a GM product.
So Scott, you just, I think you got on a little bit before, um, the chief explained that GM is not offering that right now.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I, sorry, I was updating my Zoom. I was.
I, I don't know if you want.
I can repeat a small portion of that if you want for Mr. or Counselor Lee. Um, what I was saying earlier was, uh, I reached out to GM. Um, I heard they were not producing anything, any police vehicles, um, right now. And then I found out through, uh, Wireworks, which is a company we use to set up our vehicles. Uh, he got word that GM is not building a PPV vehicle, which is the police pursuit rated vehicle other than the Tahoe. And those will not be ready for order until, uh, May of 2024.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, I will say in my research that I've done, the only negative things that I've heard about the Tahoe is one is just the gas mileage is not as great. Um, and in city driving, the officers were complaining that the vehicle is a little bit big to like turn around on vehicles on a city street, um, versus highway. It's a little bit easier. They got plenty more room. Those are the only two negative things I heard about the Tahoe. Um, I heard more negative things about Ford and then the, that one hit me that I was mentioning with the Dodge. Um, but the agencies that I've contacted, some of them have been using the Dodgers since 2019. And the Chargers is what they were having the problems with earlier than that. Um, but I haven't noticed any significant problems with the Durangos, um, from the agencies that I talked to. And they've been using them since 2019 pretty regularly and they're actually moving their fleet up. I think it was, uh, St. Helen's PD. I'm trying to look at my notes. Um, they have sixteen patrol vehicles and eleven of them are Durangos now, and they're ordering more to replace what they've got.
All right.
So I'm not, uh, Counselor Lee, I'm not advocating, since you joined in a little bit later, I'm not advocating for any vehicle. Um, I'm just looking at trying to get a couple of vehicles, um, as soon as we can. Um, just to let you know also, uh, we do have two Tahos that we obtained from Kaiser PD. So we can use some of those, um, until we do get our new vehicle, so we can spread out the wear and tear.
Okay, I, all I wanted to do is just get my voice part, uh, across on that aspect. Um. Chief Flowers, I believe that you're going to make the right decision. I just wanted to make, like I said, make that point.
Thank you. Um, and I honestly haven't made a complete decision yet until, uh, I get the council's input, so.
Right.
Well, I'm in favor of letting me make the decision. I mean, the price is doing more, potentially more than $2,000 on those three vehicles, even after we spend the $2,000.
Let's get Ford and Chevrolet are both a roll of the dice right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't need to roll the dice when you, you know, have things to do.
I was just going to make, I was just going to make that point. Chief, you can stay there, but remember anytime we buy something mechanical, it's, you know, it's really hit and miss. I think when we look for trends, so if we knew there was a mechanical default in a particular vehicle, we would definitely not want to be part of that purchasing group. Uh, but at the same time, I mean, I think our research hasn't really shown that the current models are having uh, any known issue and, uh, they've been in use. Um, and back to the same thing with GM, there's really not an incentive. Uh, I have a Tahoe, I really enjoy the Tahos, but a great vehicle. I've had good success with it, uh, as a personal vehicle and I think they'd be great to be in the fleet. But what I would tell you is you can almost not buy a Tahoe a lot. They're just, they're kind of all pre-ordered now. And, um, I'm just not sure if there's a lot of incentives for GM to do a special bill for less money. Uh, to supply police departments. I don't know when that's going to get back in the rotation. Um. And then, you know, Ford and Dodge again, up and down. I think there's pros and cons to both of them.
Well, can we just make a motion for you allowing to buy an appropriate vehicle? Does it have to be that specific to Dodge or, I think, I mean, as, as the price, the price guideline, what I see is the issue, other than that, you can go and buy whatever you.
That's why I wrote up the staff report is because I originally wrote up the staff report, reporting Ford is where we're going and I got you an exact price of upfitting of the Wireworks. I just did all that work and then that's falling through. Now I'm going to have to spend more money if I go to something else. That's why we reapproach, reapproach the council. If, if we go that route or we can wait.
I mean, I think we should amend it to allow you to buy what you need. Not specifically to any brand, but if I was appropriate.
They will do that, Mark?
Right. Just drive the Dodge Durango out of the way and just say, I'm going to offer a decision to approve a new patrol vehicle instead of previous Ford interpretive patrol vehicle using the current price.
Actually, I believe it's two patrol vehicles council approved. That may say A.
Yeah. I'm just reading this, this is, it says A, so.
It should be plural. The motion would be allow us to purchase two vehicles instead of the previous vehicle. For interpretive interceptors, um, in the statement.
Would that be an appropriate motion? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Moving on to agenda item number seven, our city administrator report, Ron.
All right. Well, we do have a little bit on my report tonight. I'll try not to be too long-winded. Uh, first, uh, point you to both the, uh, police report and the public works report. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out with the, uh, public works report is as counsel knows, we've really been working hard to reduce our lost water rate in our system. Every, uh, potable water delivery system has a certain amount of loss, uh, unaccounted for water. Uh, a lot of times these are leaks in the system. Um, or, you know, variations between, uh, what goes through a meter and what might be pumped in the master meter that's left within the system at different times, things like that. And, um, we had been averaging about seventeen percent lost water. There's been times where that was up as high as twenty-four to twenty-eight percent. Uh, and that's significant for us because water is a, um, commodity that we just don't have an abundancy of. Um, and right now, uh, we're averaging around ten percent. Uh, which is, uh, kind of the not to exceed recommended loss. Uh, but we're going to continue to work to get that, uh, system even tighter. And, uh, some of the ways that, uh, we'll look to improve that is continuing to look for leaks. Uh, but also we had spoke to council about improving our reader, our meter read system at some point in the future. That'll probably come up next year. Uh, and that I think will help significantly, but I just wanted to let you know that, that's, that's kind of big for us because it's a couple of years we've been working to get that system, um.
Look, how much of that do you think is from the concrete pipes?
Well, there's always going to be a certain amount that leaks from your, uh, AC asbestos pipe, which is basically the, it's not a pressurized line. It's concrete fitted with sleeves. Um, and what happens is that concrete, uh, pipe's been in the ground for, you know, fifty, sixty years. Uh, and you get a certain amount of seepage, uh, through that over time or there's cracks. You can't really hear those, uh, leaks when they're, because they're kind of seeping out through the cracks. Uh, they're not usually pressurized, so you can't hear them. But yes, as we go through and start to, um, replace parts of that AC water line, we'll see again a reduction. And, um, I've been through this before in my career and, you know, we've gotten that number down to a less than a couple of percent a month, which is a really constrained, uh, tight system. And so we'll keep working on that because, you know, when you think of it, uh, if we had to go out and buy water rights, even if we could buy water rights, uh, the amount of water that you're losing is millions of dollars with the water. And we want to make sure that we don't just go and buy water rights to replace water that's going in thin air somewhere, so. So yeah, we'll keep doing that. We'll keep looking at all those things, but uh, that was a big leak that they, they reported on that they found, so that was really good. Um, couple of items, just corn festival, I think went really well this year. Uh, I, I will tell you that even though we were, uh, down in donations a little bit this year, because we didn't, we weren't as proactive seeking donations. Uh, we did have several, uh, local businesses and community members that came forward and gave extra money, uh, to help out. Uh, but we were still down a little bit in donations from previous years and part of it's just inflation and the economy uh, that we're dealing with. However, at the end of the day, we actually, um, I don't want to say profited, but our, our income is much higher this year uh, than in previous years. So we'll actually have more money to distribute among all of the local service groups than we've had in previous years. So, uh, I don't have a complete total for you tonight because there's still some outgoing expenses that haven't been factored in and there always is. But at the next meeting, we'll come forward with recommendations, uh, and, and accounting of it. But I would say this year we're probably four or five thousand dollars more in money that we can distribute than in previous years. So it's pretty good. Uh, we did concentrate on other things like how to, how to generate more revenue and, and other aspects of corn festivals so that we could generate more revenue for those nonprofits, because the nonprofits are our volunteer base. You know, they're our volunteer group, so we want to support them and in turn, we want them to come and, and support the event. So it's a good relationship and I think honestly a good model, uh, for a community-wide event. So, um, we, you know, we always have a few, uh, complaints that's raised and you would with any type of a, an event of that size. Uh, but we absorb those, uh, in and we look at, okay, now for next year, how can we change this? And make it a benefit instead of, you know, something that people see as a negative. A good example of that was, um, not that we had a lot of complaints, but we had two or three complaints about having to pay a parking fee, uh, to get corn. Uh, if they were just going to buy corn. And so this year we changed the parking to a donation instead of requesting a set dollar amount. We just said, feel free to donate if you want to donate and, um, we actually raised about thirty-five percent more in revenue this year than last year in parking because people were very generous and they were willing to donate, knowing all the service organizations would be the benefactors. So, uh, just stuff like that. And I think our operation is getting dialed in a little bit more. We're trying to figure out how to operate the event with less volunteers, because at times throughout the day, we don't have always enough volunteers. And then also to, not to, you know, overwork our volunteers so they can't move for the next three days. Um, and so we've been trying to manage those aspects of the festival. Honestly, I, I, I can't really be more pleased to, than where it's headed. Um, got more tweaks to do and it should be an event where we're always reflecting and, um, you know, making it better. But I think, I think it's really good. If you have any feedback, um, that you would like to provide, feel free to do that in writing or verbally. We're actually going to organize a, uh, just a debriefing meeting, uh, of volunteer groups and city staff, and we've got a list of things that we can work on. Um, and we're going to kind of, we're going to kind of go from there. One of the big, uh, issues we dealt with was, uh, vendors, I think this year because we had a lot more vendors and you know, we were renting out a twelve-foot space and we said, we're marking you out a twelve-foot space. So if you need more than one, take more than one. And then some vendors came and needed two spaces or even three spaces. But they only, they only booked one. And, you know, we'd already had places set, so that, we're going to look at how we can maybe do a, you tell us how many feet you need and then we'll come up with a calculation for what the cost of that is versus uh, this defined space, if you need something other than a twelve by twelve, so. So we'll look at that, but otherwise I think, I think the rest of it was, was pretty good. So, um, uh, public works facility, the building, uh, has been on location for several weeks. I think we're still waiting for the permit to be issued. Uh, but they're out there mobilizing and they're doing all the land prep right now. So that's exciting to see. Our water reservoir and wells, um, the well drilling is complete in Porter Boone Park. They're moving in now into well development and that is, um, uh, you know, to ma, to maximize the flow that they can get out of that well. Uh, and then the reservoir will go out to bid, um, this week, I think, later this week. So it's moving along. We're currently, uh, underway with our audit. The auditors were in our offices today. Uh, they plan to be here the next, uh, couple of days. Uh, and then of course, um, we'll work for a few weeks providing and submitting materials online through their portal. And then they'll follow up with additional requests. Uh, typically we get that audit report either by the end of the year or sometime after the first of the year. Um, uh, I've had one year where they had to file an extension just because they were so busy, they couldn't get them all processed. But typically we should have that by January and I don't expect, uh, any issues with that. Uh, Hyburger Ditch, uh, we're cleaning the ditch, the storm ditch out again this year. We do it every few years. Uh, we've kind of taken a soft touch on the ditch. It's really the homeowners responsibility of the folks that live along the ditch to keep the ditch, uh, clean and debris-free. Um, but it's, it's easier for us to go in and clean it to ensure that we're not going to have an issue with storm water flowing into the neighborhood. So we've been doing that. There are some homeowners that, uh, won't provide us permission to go in there and clean the ditch and those folks will have to take care of it themselves. And in that particular case, we will be issuing enforcement letters to those homeowners if they don't clean their section out properly. Um, the ditch is a deed restriction on all those homes along Hyburger Ditch. And, uh, in their deed restrictions, they're required to maintain that under DEQs rules and regulations, so. Um. Did you have a question?
Yes. And the whole ditch, all the homeowners.
Yes, some of them have a big green space between that ditch. Those are their fences.
Are they more than double Lamont Street?
Section.
Yes, the city owns sections of those, all those green spaces are typically owned by the city. Uh, and that's part of Hyburger Park, but along Will Lamont Street there, when that was first dedicated, for whatever reason, they opted to uh, split the ownership in the center of the ditch by opposing properties. Uh, and then just require them to ke, keep it clean. In hindsight, that probably wasn't the best way to address that because it is a public facility. And, um, you know, you can't, you don't, it's usually difficult without some sort of HOA or unified organization. It's really difficult to go after those individuals if they're not maintaining it and, and provide that service. Um, we can do it through code enforcement and for the, like, the last four years or five years, we've been addressing it with the individual homeowners. But we've got a couple of holdouts, uh, that, um, don't want the city. Don't want the city to touch the ditch and in those particular cases, we're going to have to do enforcement. Yeah, so it's going to cost them several thousand dollars. Um, probably to go in and get that section cleaned out, but. Anyway, we're gonna have to do that. I just wanted to give you a heads up. Uh, our development ordinance, I think October fifth, we have the development ordinance coming forward. To the planning commission and then that'll come to council. It's just got that parking change. There's a couple of minor changes. The one thing we are going to add in there is a, the ability to approve a. Uh, master plan development and that is because we ran into some issues. Trying to figure out the best way to approve the ID zone commercial development. Um, and uh, our planner has suggested a master plan approval. Would be the cleanest way to do it. So we've included that in there. I believe we also have the hearing to bring the park property in. To the city's UGB, the Bishop Road Park. Um, and there might be a couple of other. Actions. I can't remember exactly everything that's on that agenda, but I wanted to give you a heads up for the development code. Um, we're dealing with lots of land use and government issues right now. It goes in ebbs and flows. But I always like to just kind of let council know when it's ramping up and we're doing more of it because. You know, you're probably, or you may get calls. Um. But you know, we just, we have a lot of people that don't do their due diligence and then they get on the wrong side of land use. And then we, you know, we're, we're at fault uh in their minds and there's really not a lot we can do. We can't. Change the direction of our community and land use laws every time somebody doesn't do their due diligence. So. Uh, domestic partnerships, this is something, this just kind of came about. I hadn't really been tracking this, but. Our insurance coverage is now offering uh coverage. For domestic partnerships and they're basically. Um, the way that they've set the system up is we have to opt out of offering that to uh city employees. Or we just stay in. Um. I don't have a problem with it per se, but honestly, I haven't had enough notice or opportunity. To do kind of a uh analysis of what the financial impact of this would be to the city and it could be significant. Um, when you think of a, a family coverage is about twenty-six thousand dollars a year for the city. And and the individual coverage is eight thousand dollars. Uh, and you know, you're looking at. Uh, you know, an eighteen thousand dollar gap. Um, and if you had multiple people that. Uh, are not married, but claim a domestic partnership, then that automatically triggers that cost. And it's not a benefit that we have in our approved employee handbook. Um, I just don't want to presume council doesn't want to offer it. Um, so I wanted to ask you, unfortunately, the deadline, I just again found this out is this week. To opt in or out for the next enrollment period. So I really need some direction you, from you. I think. My preference would be to opt out and then. Understand it through the budgetary process and then look at it as an option to. Uh, enroll into later. We can always add it during an enrollment period, but. We can't take it away once we offer it. So.
So my, my opinion on this is that there are just as many unmarried people. And they don't get married. They live together for years.
Yeah.
And they struggle not to be able to cover their spouses or their partners. Um. So. I think that we should keep any coverage that would allow. This is just my opinion.
Right.
Because we have just as many. I feel that not having that would, would, it's not being inclusive. That's just my opinion.
Well, we, we offer a level of benefits that a lot of cities don't offer. So we pay a hundred percent of the employee and and their family members. And a lot of cities don't necessarily do that. Some do, but not all. Um. And it's up to us whether we offer it or not. And and again, I don't care one way or the other. Just know if you do offer it, that. That is going to equate itself into fees and rates. Because it's, it's our second highest expense next to wages. Nobody's ru- nobody's requested it and I would know unless they actually signed up to the program. So.
The next open enrollment?
It would, it would be in, the open enrollment happens in the fall, so it happens in October and it start, the coverage starts January. Uh, twenty-four, so this January. Yeah, I, I think we just need to do some hypothetical projections of what the impact of that would be, but again. It it's really up to you from a policy standpoint. I tend to agree with the mayor at to some extent. I, I'm torn on it a little bit.
So is there? Would we be covering the full benefit of the domestic partner or is there an option? I know like what the state. Does is if I have a domestic partner and I want to add them onto my insurance as state employee, then I'm responsible for a certain. Amount of that coverage. The state isn't going to pick up all of it. Is there an option for that?
Well, again, that's why I would suggest that we do more due diligence and maybe opt out this year and then look at. Those things. I don't know that you could. I wonder if that wouldn't be. Less inclusive of an approach.
I don't know. I just, before they, they used to do that. So I, I don't know if they still do it, but um.
So would we have to opt out for an entire year or?
Yes. Until, until the next enrollment period. And the same with opting in, once. You know, the thing about it is, I mean, you know me, I'm a little cautious when it comes to stuff like this and trying to figure out the details, but. Um, it's not something we offer now. So really, does it harm us to wait a year and do some? That's kind of where I am, but.
My next question is if, if we o- if we opt in and no one signs up, are we still going to be charged for it?
Only if somebody signs up. You will be, you'll pay the premiums. You'll pay the premiums. There'll be more expense in the uh federal. Uh, uh withholding deductions. Um, I just don't know what that, what those numbers are because honestly, I just. I got back today. I got the notice. Tonight's the meeting. I didn't really have a, a lot of opportunity to do much due diligence. From a number standpoint, because we had the audit going on, other than, other than the talk to CIS about what our options were. Um, and, and so.
Very kind of them to tell you this late in the game.
Well, they may have sent something last week. I think I have until like the. I think we have until like the sixteenth to opt in or to opt out. We're already in. You have to go in and actually opt out, which that I don't like because then we didn't have a choice. They opted us in and now we gotta go do something to get out, but just because it has a budgetary impact. I can't just leave it sit. I have to come and talk to you guys. Well, and honestly, the only, the only way. The only way that I could do an analysis would be to take everybody that's covered under the family plan. And every employee and minus them from the employees covered under the single plan. And then assume everybody that's single will be covered under the family plan and that would be the difference. That potential budgetary difference.
That analysis like that went right over my head.
That's the only way. You have to make a lot of assumptions because I can't go ask folks, are you gonna sign it?
We would have unclean data. It wouldn't be, we would still have unclean data.
Yeah.
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 No matter what.
Yeah.
At least we would have an idea.
I mean. I, again, I don't know what those numbers are. I just would have to go and pull them, but let's say it's, let's say it's six. Employees. Uh. Currently that would take a domestic partner and I don't know if that number is realistically, this is very hypothetical. So you're six times eighteen thousand. It's close to a hundred thousand dollars. So you're, you know, that's. That's significant. Now, of course, you're going to spread, spread that across a number of funds. So. Again, it's up to you if you're, if you're concerned about the budgetary impact down the road. Then we should take a cautionary approach. If you're not, if you're more concerned about making sure. Those folks have some sort of coverage, then just from a policy standpoint, then I say we, we just stay in.
We already have trouble. Getting people and maintaining people.
Holding the dice and saying, uh, we can't cover you because you didn't actually get married.
That's my issue too. Scott saying he's having um trouble hearing a couple of people.
Oh, sorry.
Like move the mic a little closer to us.
Sorry, Scott.
W- Walter, will you repeat what you said?
Yeah, what I'm, I have a concern that we already have trouble. Uh, hiring and maintaining employees. So to tell somebody that. Uh, we can't ensure your spouse, your partner, because you're not actually married. Doesn't, doesn't quite sit right with me. Did you hear me that time, Scott?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We still have Scott listed as an attendee, not a panelist. He came in as an attendee rather than his.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, guys. I didn't have the link to be a panelist, but yes, I heard you.
Okay, very good. Okay. Well, again, this is a policy direction by council. I just can't give you numbers. That's all, but if you're.
So basically, it's going to affect us for six months of our budget because we would be working on the new budget starting in July, right?
Yeah, and you know, I'll be honest with you. I, I probably am less concerned of it from. A, a budget approval process because we can probably come back and do a budget amendment.
Yeah.
For the additional money more as would just be for you to just understand that it has an ongoing budgetary impact. Um, if you accept it as a benefit, it's, it's really hard to take that benefit away, especially from a select group. Right now, we don't have to offer it to the group. There's no mandate for that. We typically and traditionally have not offered it. So just from a policy standpoint, know that. I wish I could give you some guidance on where, um, you know. My recommendation, uh, honestly, I, I tend to lean towards the mayor and Walter. It's. It's just I have this, you know, little nagging thing about budget numbers, but other than that, from a policy standpoint, it's probably the right thing to do. I agree.
No, I agree.
I, I mean, if you're saying that we don't need to worry about the budget impact if you're not worried about.
Well, I just want to make sure I clarify that comment based on your rephrasing. Uh, to legally spend money, we have a budget authority. Limit. I'm less concerned about that budget authority limit. In the back of my mind, not running the numbers, I don't know what the accumulative effect on the budget over, let's say, a five-year period. Would be, and that would be my raised concern. Only, that's my only raised concern. Yeah.
My understanding is unless they actually try to sign up for it, then there's no expense to anybody.
So it sounds like I've heard direction from a majority of you. I don't need guidance. I just will opt out. Cause CIS opted us in, so.
I think that's what we all want.
Okay, I, but I just couldn't do it without talking to you because of the budgetary.
Scott, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, okay, good. Um. Sorry if I'm going a little long tonight, but this will be my last item unless you have questions of me. I just wanted to give council an update on our. Uh, wastewater funding. So we have a budgetary number. And it hasn't went out the bid. Remember, these are just engineers estimates, so that's our target. Uh, those numbers could change when we get to a build, but that's what the numbers are right now. Of twenty-eight plus million dollars. Uh, right now, we've secured a little over nine point three million dollars in funding with communities help. Through a lot of the work that we've done. And we've applied, as you know, we've had these conversations for the last year and spent a lot of effort applying for USDA. Grants. Um, it's hypothetical, uh. The USDA grants, because they're not officially stamped yet. Uh, we would receive uh six million dollars in grant funding from USDA. That's the number we've been talking about. Uh, but we'd have to take a nine million dollar loan. Excuse me, because it's a loan forgiveness program. And the loan forgiveness, the grant is a percentage of the law. Okay, based on our census data and our population and um. Other, other factors that go into uh their analysis. Uh, and then there's a possible two million dollar grant on a four million dollar loan. So it's a fifty percent grant from DEQ. They've announced. So when you add all of that up. Um, we're, and we get, we apply and we get those things, we're close to nineteen million dollars. Um, so we're roughly eleven million dollars. Excuse me, I got a little tickle. Eleven million dollars in loans. Now, there's some things that council needs to know. Both of these grants, this eight million dollars in grants. Are contingent on us taking the loan. So you have to take a four million dollar loan to get two million from DEQ. You have to take a fifteen million dollar loan to get six million from USDA. Eight million dollars is not small change. It doubles the amounts of grants we've been working the last three to four years to get. Um, but where it leaves us in the process is. We're still eleven million dollars short. We gotta take eleven million dollars in loans in order to do that. That will go towards a rate fee uh as well as O and M. Now, it's not the scary number that we had talked about at the onset of this meeting, but it is significant. Impacts um to the rate payers. And we're gonna be fast approached. I'm just kind of giving you a preview so you can, your minds can think about this and absorb it. We're going to be fast approached where we have to say yay or nay to uh this process. If. If we go get more grants. Uh, try to get more grants and I'm not really sure that we would be successful. Uh, we've really. Hit the pavement hard. Uh, so to speak. It would reduce it from the amount of grants that are offered. So if we were to go get a five million dollar grant. From someone, it, they would just deduct five million dollars from the loan forgiveness, not from the entire loan. Uh, that's the way the system works. So. Probably within the next month or two. Uh, we are going to have to, uh, we're going to have to make a decision on the whole funding mechanism. And I want you to think about it and think about the impact, think about our options. Uh, if we turn, if we end up turning down. Uh, the USDA loan, we can't go back and start, we can't go back to them and get the same deal. We are only getting the deal. Because we were grandfathered in on uh, the two thousand and ten census.
Wrong with this number? What are we looking at the? I- it's a guesstimate for the rate increase. It's not that giant number that we talked about.
It's not the giant number. I, I haven't been able to put together some fine numbers, but. It's not the giant number. I I haven't been able to put together some fine numbers, but one of the things. I've done is I've contacted a company, a couple of companies. That uh we can do a hypothetical analysis ourselves. But there's companies out there that uh we have to employ anyway as part of the loan process. We have to go get this study done on how we would pay the money back. Right? And what that looks like. And so we'll have to hire a company that specializes in that, so. I've opened up some conversations that maybe the next meeting or maybe we just do a special work session on this. Where we just talk about hypotheticals. We have a spreadsheet that we can hypothetically plug in. And it'll get us close. I mean, it's not going to be, you know. It's not going to be way off, but it's not going to be dialed into a specific rate analysis and we're going to need that study. Uh, documented to be able to provide to these agencies before we can close out the loans.
And when was, when are they needing answers on this? You said it was, I missed that, I'm sorry. When do we have to respond to these soon?
Well, um.
Soon as a month, soon as three months, soon as weeks.
We, we've said all along that we're, we're accepting it. It's when we pull the trigger for that.
Yeah.
Funding, so I mean, at some point. At some point, we can't stall on the funding, even though construction may be a few years out. Um. Uh, we'll have three years to uh. Use the money. From USDA in their particular contract. And we can apply to extend and uh once we get the contract, we can apply for other things. Like we could, if a grant fell in our lap, we could go back and try to apply and see if they'll. Give us, you know, some sort of a credit. Um, we can do all those things. It's just not a guarantee. But at some point, we're, we're going to have a window. Once they issue the official award. Uh, USDA, we're going to have a window of acceptance uh where basically we lock ourselves into the program. So anyway, uh, I think it's a good news story. I mean, if you would have told me. When you think about it, this is uh. Uh, eighteen nineteen million dollars in grants for this project, uh. Another four million dollars in grants for the water project, a million dollars in grants for the public. Works facility. You know, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven million dollars in grants that we've been able to get in the last couple of years. That's pretty successful. I know we'd love it to be everything was paid for, but that's just not the realities, even when there's a lot of money out there. There's still a lot of need, so. Um, we're still looking for other avenues like. You know, if we were able to get. We carved out of our application four million dollars uh to go to D E Q. If we were to get four million dollars in grants, then we could probably get rid of that two million dollars. And just replace that four million in our USDA application, so there's still lots of variables. But at some point, we're just going to have to say, okay. This is where we're at and now let's go and move the project forward and we're getting real close to that. And so. You're going to want to have, and we're going to want to have conversations with the community, letting them know, one. That we've been really successful. Like I say, eighteen nineteen million dollars in grants for this is phenomenal. Um, but the downside is there is a percentage the community is going to have to pay for and that's about a third. Um, so. Uh, there is some impact there. Uh, and that's really all I have. Oh, I do have one other thing and um. You know, uh, the liquor control process has changed. Years ago, we would bring uh forward. Liquor licenses to be approved by council. And the renewals of liquor licenses would be approved by council and they've kind of changed that. Uh, a little bit. They have to be approved by the local jurisdiction, but we've been bringing those forward in just your consent agenda items. Um, rather than a large conversation. Um, and I have an application, it, I picked it off my desk today. Uh, so it didn't get in your packets, but it's for the little stop and save and it's a change of ownership. And I guess I'm just asking if there's something that um. You guys want to have come forward for another action at the next meeting or? If it's uh, if it's of concern, you could make a motion and just authorize me to sign it. It's really up to you, but I believe they sold. Beer and wine out of there before.
Stop and save or the gas station.
The gas station right here. Yeah.
So it's not for the stop and save, it's for gas station, the gas.
No, no, the, the people that own the stop and save over here purchase this.
Okay, I thought you said the, the licenses for the stop and save. It's for the, the old, the old gas station across the street.
Well, they call it stop and saved.
Oh, okay.
In their application, but it is for that address.
Okay.
So uh, maybe that's their new name. They now own both locations.
They're all called stop and saves.
I, maybe they are.
Okay.
Um, so the question is, is do you want this to come back to you or is it something that you're comfortable? Authorizing me to sign?
I'm fine with you guys. They were selling it there before. I don't have a problem.
Kind of where I landed on.
Change of ownership and if you approve of the owner, I mean, we've already got him selling it at two other places, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Kind of a moot point on that one.
Yeah.
That's something new, I don't know why.
Well, it's just our process has always been to bring it forward to council for approval. Um, some of the processes, like when they do renewals. Is if you just don't comment over a period of time, it's automatically renewed. Um, and we typically just don't take an action unless we have. An objection, but. Uh, so you're just by consensus, it's okay, okay. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. If you have any.
What is? An ID zone?
Interchange development zone. It's this.
Okay.
Section of green right there.
Saying that, I know you're talking about.
Yeah. I, I use the acronym, I apologize.
Okay, there's lots out there.
Was there anything else?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number eight, mayor and counselor reports. Does anyone have anything to report? I do. Um, I met with. The mayor of Turner, Sublimity and Staten. Um, we have the, every year, the O M A Oregon Mayor's Association does this thing. Like if I were mayor contest, um, we've done it here with the Omso Elementary School. Uh, I met with our fellow neighbors. And we're going to work together to see if we can, we have overlapping schools. We have the Cascade School District and then we have Saint Mary's. Um, we have families from Omso that go to Saint Mary's and Regis. So we're going to try to make our prizes. The same and and see if we can get more participation and. I had talked to Ron about it to see if there was funding and there is. So I just want you guys to know, I'm going to be working with the other mayors and our neighbors and I think this is a good way to kind of like bring us. Together, what's one of the things that we talked about, like how can we start doing smaller things together? We have all these events so close to one another, so. Um. Yep, we're hopefully going to start reaching out to the schools in October. If there's nothing else, we can move on to good of the order. Is there anything for good of the order? Correspondence. We have one that was included. A packet. I'll be on your desk. Um, if there's no comment on that, we can, we have no executive session. Then we can go ahead and adjourn if there's nothing further. Go ahead and adjourn at seven fifty nine P M.